... lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as gudini, meaning "over in the woods or among the redwoods." Past actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from their land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. If you'd like to join us, please stand for this flag salute. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Schaefer?
Here.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember Stillman? And Councilmember Atkins Salazar is absent, but we do have a quorum.
Thank you. So if you wish to make a comment tonight during our meeting, either during the two open public comment periods or for an individual agenda item, there are three ways to do so. If you're here in person, please line up behind the podium when the item you would like to speak on is accepting public comment. If you're logged in on Zoom, click Raise Your Hand when it's time for public comment on the item you wish to speak. Or if you're on your phone, press *9 to raise your hand. And when it's your turn, you will be prompted to dial *6 to unmute your phone. For each item, we will take the in-person public comment first and then move to online comments. We will not be going back and forth. So if you're wanting to comment, please line up at the podium or raise your electronic hand as soon as comment is being requested for that item. All right, our next item, there are no ceremonial matters this evening, so that takes us to a report by commission or committee. And this evening, we have our annual report from the Energy Committee. And George Williamson is here to present it. No, Michael Winkler is here to present it. Okay. I saw you walk in and I said, "Well, that's not the day I'm on here." Take it away, please.
Well, we've had a setback from the state. But anyway, as far as accomplishments, before I took over his chair, George Williamson and Andrea Alston were Chair and Vice Chair respectively. The main thing that we worked on is the Arcata All-Electric Initiative. The purpose of the initiative was to shift energy use of new construction from mixed fuels using natural gas to all-electric. And the Energy Committee and a subcommittee of the Energy Committee studied this and reported back to staff and delivered that to the council. And it also was evaluated by the city attorney. Unfortunately, a few months ago, a judge ruled that the ordinances of this type violated the power of the federal government to regulate electricity and were, for that reason, invalid. And staff will now have to go back and evaluate what the alternatives are to achieve similar purposes that the proposed ordinance was going to achieve. And the city attorney and staff will be looking at that. The committee discussed various alternatives and reported that back to staff. And then staff will include the comments from the Energy Committee for further evaluation by staff and by the city council. That the, in addition to the All-Electric Initiative, the committee also has worked with a number of local groups, including Redwood Coast Energy Authority, 350 Humboldt, Redwood Coalition for Climate Environmental Responsibility, and the company that I'm a partner in, Redwood Energy, on climate-related issues. And the committee has collaborated with the city council and, as I said, with city staff. Let's see, the committee also evaluated the energy impact of the proposed Arcata Gateway Plan and discussed that within committee and gave our evaluation back to staff, which should have been forwarded to the city council also. And the committee received updates on the Regional Climate Action Plan at our May meeting and evaluated this. Goals for the upcoming year include Arcata Greenhouse Gas Reduction and Climate Action Plan. And another directive from the council, Transportation Mode Shift, to be consistent with Climate Action Plan. With further direction from staff and from council, we will continue to work on the All-Electric Initiative. And we also will support staff in exploring low-carbon options for community resiliency. And an area that I work on professionally that's also included in our scope is to identifying changes that occurred in the Energy Code from the state that went into effect this January. And then finally, we also will be exploring waste-to-energy projects, specifically having to do with food waste and the possibilities of using gas produced by anaerobic digestion as an energy source. That was something that was used many years ago in Arcata and wasn't successful at that time. But there are directions from the state of California to be able to do collection of food waste. And this is a beneficial way of using it, a way of offsetting some of the energy that we use in Arcata.
And did you say, "Are you the Chair now?"
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you, Chair Winkler. Are there questions from the council about our Energy Committee's report this evening?
Sure. Can I, do you mind? I'm sorry. Thank you so much. Really appreciate all your work on the All-Electric Initiative. Did you guys, when you were talking about building more housing in Infill, do you have any research or talk about grid capacity and reliability? And is that something that we should be concerned with moving forward?
Well, this is something that you may have seen having to do, especially with the south of the county where they're overloaded. We have discussed that and we discussed it briefly. And at this time, feedback that we're getting from PG&E is that it's not an issue in this part of the county. It's specifically an issue in South County and additional manufacturing capabilities and demand that that would put on the limited grid that's available in Garberville and other parts of the south part of the country.
Talking about the waste-to-energy projects, you know, being the Chair of the HWMA Board and going, talking about SP 1383, that sounds like a really interesting thing to continue to work on. So I'm looking forward to hearing what you come up with that. So thank you so much, Chair Winkler. It's nice to see you.
You're welcome. Nice to see you.
I had a question if I could.
Yeah, you're not done yet.
So, and it was kind of a piggyback from Meredith with regards to grid capacity. And I'm really interested in community resiliency. And I know you've mentioned the benefit, or it says in here, "the benefit of solar with battery backup options." And I was just wondering if you might be able to expound a little bit more in other low-carbon options for community resiliency.
Let's see. One thing that's been done by an organization I used to work for, SHOT Energy Research Center, is that they've developed a microgrid for the airport and the facilities associated with that. I don't know if you're familiar with that. And also, the Blue Lake Rancheria has also done a microgrid. And so that's something that could be looked at to be used in cases of emergency. Currently, the city uses generators, which are fossil-fueled for backup. And it's something that staff and the council could look at or give direction to the Energy Committee as a lower-carbon option for backup during emergencies, either microgrid or replacements for current generators that are used for the city of Arcata for emergencies.
I would love to see that replaced, so thank you. Hopefully, we'll be able to give some direction as a council to further explore some options for that, to get rid of generators that we're currently using for fossil-fuel generators. And options for low-income households to maybe have individual battery backups for their own homes just during planned outages and that kind of thing.
One other thing that was not included in the report that we have discussed at times as far as shifting the city away from fossil fuels is to identify a neighborhood, especially a low-income area of the city, and have that as a possibility of a prototype of shifting all the appliances within that area from natural gas to all-electric. And we could possibly explore grant funding that would be available for doing that. So that would have the benefit of benefiting a low-income area and also a demonstration of doing low-carbon in a larger area than just one house at a time.
I like that. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I was going to ask you, so on new development in Arcata, so are we going to be requiring, or are they going to be required to have both gas, I mean, no gas, electric water heaters and stoves and heat, et cetera?
Well, that was the purpose of the All-Electric Initiative. And that has been stopped by a federal court judge. And that's something.
Nancy has an update on that for us tonight.
And so that's something that, as I was saying, we have to look at alternatives because the original path that we were pursuing, that was originally put into effect by the city of Berkeley, has been specifically overturned and restricted by a federal court judge at this time.
I thought that's what you said. I was just curious if that's, you know, how that's going to affect things.
Well, previously, during the previous Energy Code cycle, the city of Arcata had what was called a REACH Code to encourage all-electric construction. It was not banning natural gas. And that is something, that's a path that we could potentially choose again as an option. But there are a number of other options that I think that the city attorney is looking into. And I think consulting with the city of Berkeley and other cities for the alternative paths that they're pursuing to try to achieve some of the benefits of the previous ban on natural gas.
Thank you. And number six, of course, is, I love that one. So someday, I hope that can happen.
With waste, yeah. One thing that is fortunate is that the RCA has now hired Juliette Bond, who's an expert on this and has worked on this area for more than 20 years. So I think that Juliette's experience could be very helpful to RCA in working on waste energy and diverting food waste in a beneficial way.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and with that, that takes us now to early oral communications. The city values your comments. And this is a 15-minute time period to allow people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. Know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items that are not listed on the posted agenda. And at the end of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements. And requests that require council action will be set for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers will be limited to two minutes. And there will also be time to comment specifically on each agenda item. And again, at the end of our meeting, under item number 12, and that is three minutes. And so for this early oral communication time, we do do our card system. So if you've grabbed one of those little cards up there that has a number on it, you can begin to just make your way up to the podium and line up. We haven't been having too many online comments, so we'll check with online. But usually, we'll take the first four here and check with online just to make sure we have enough time for everybody. But if you're here, step up to the podium. Two minutes, items not on the agenda.
Good evening, council members. My name is Anton Souza. I'm here today to continue the Arcata Elementary School Zone traffic calming discussion, specifically the intersection of Ross and Grant, a one-way street being used as a two-way by parents and students and others. I noticed that tonight's agenda includes the annual paving project. However, Ross is still not on the list to be paved. What do we need to do to bring attention to the school zone? The speeding and directional violations, coupled with massive potholes, will only get worse when the school year starts and new parents arrive. Can we expect appropriate signage and speed humps this year? As discussed with the council previously via email and meetings, these traffic violations were clearly documented in the city's traffic audit nearly two years ago. That was accompanied also by a traffic calming initiative signed by every resident on Ross Street. Please let us know how and when the council will move forward with this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. So there's a line, sir. They're all in line there, yeah.
Oh, I thought you had card two.
Oh, oh, but you have card two. Okay, well, either way, all right.
Good evening. My name is Chief Johnny Jupiter, and I have deeds over 250 years that own this land that you're sitting on. So you're sitting on my land. The federal government has failed the American Indian. They spent $6 trillion in a national debt on COVID. And my people are hungry. My people don't have their teeth fixed. My people don't own their own homes. Yet you're on my land. I'm here to negotiate a successful surrender of the federal and state government and all governments other than American Indian in this land. We intend to issue martial law in five days. Murderers will be killed on the site. Rapists will be killed on the site. Women beaters will be killed on the site. And child molesters will be killed on the site. We will forgive anybody that wants to change their ways. They could leave town. I live on Murder Mountain. We're bringing those laws here. I've only been in your town for five days, one day. I don't see time. I had the legal right and obligation to kill over 100 people in your town. I've been threatened to be murdered. I've been spit on. I've been humiliated, beyond humiliated, on my own home. I sleep on the ground. This is my sleeping bag and my mining outfit. I have gold nuggets this big. I'm finding dinosaur fossils being sold in this town. They are stolen. So I want you to know that we're bringing weapons to this town, Indian-style. All good citizens are welcome to stay. I am your personal bodyguard. I kill with my bare fingers. I've been tested by the UFC. I could kill 100 people naked. I am the creator. The Chumash in Santa Barbara recognized me as God. I destroyed $100 million of real estate just to prove I'm God. Are there any questions? Who do I meet with? I do not want any policemen or any guns in this town unless they answer to Chief Champagne. He runs the sheriff in Garberville.
All right. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay. All right, thank you. Folks get two minutes, so let's let everybody else have a chance to state their piece as well. Thank you. Okay, please, sir, thank you. All right. So it's this woman's turn now. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Pam Loudens-Lager, and I have lived here for 40 years. And I feel passionate about the L Street Linear Park. And it's kind of a no-brainer. I mean, in 2010, it was a good idea, right? And we have the path now. And I'm out there almost every day, and I see other people using it and enjoying it. And I just say, "Why are we throwing the baby out with the bathwater?" You know, we have this. Why not enhance it and make it even better? It just seems like the right thing to do, as far as I'm concerned. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, our next speaker here in person.
Hello to council and staff, James Becker. And I just wanted to call attention to the great Redwood Trail and Ukiah Linear Park, because there's a lot of parallels between what we're experiencing here. It is considered, we call it rail-trail, but I mean, in essence, either rails-trail, rails-of-trail. And in 2020, they actually designated it as a linear park, similar pathways as far as community members, you know, being involved, encouraging it. And also, part of the Great Redwood Trail, a destination in this case from both Sonoma County and also from Humboldt County. Yeah, no worries. I'm okay, but it's, yeah, no, I'm fine. But, yeah, for sure. Yeah, so I appreciate the pause of the clock. Thank you. Yeah, and let me just jump back through here a minute. Yeah, community members have been working, you know, volunteers over five years to enhance the corridor. They got a lot of input before. And the big parallel is it was actually voted on through council. So there's a lot of similarities, you know, other than, I think, there was probably other plans for it. It was a corridor. The road wasn't considered. But beyond that, I mean, I think there's a lot of people out there. It's something they want, and I think it was the same thing there. It just, I think, was laser pathway. So I would just encourage you to consider that. And I think that's plenty of time for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Good evening. My name's Joanne McGary, and I come here all the time. I'm bringing an ancient sign that I created right around the time that we all became aware of Greta Thunberg's movement to call attention to the climate reality and the climate crisis. So our house is on fire. And I don't necessarily want you to panic, but I want you to understand that we have been dealing with the reality of the climate changing dramatically for many, many years, decades. But right now, it's really hitting the fence in terms of what is happening. And our town needs to, needs to be in the forefront of the movement. I oftentimes tell people, I was a park ranger at Meere Woods in the old-growth forest down there in Marin. But I've learned, having spent time there, that everything you need to learn about surviving on the planet, you can learn in an old-growth redwood forest. So I think that we all, as citizens and residents of this beautiful redwood country, need to learn that lesson and how we can survive. And I need to see some solid action right now. The UN Secretary-General, Anton Gutierrez, just said, "We're out of the era of global warming. We're in the era of global boiling." And that might sound extreme, but it's really not. Think of the frog in the pot. And we got to do something. I want to see visionary leadership from you folks, visionary leadership and some action we all can do together. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. All right, our next speaker.
Hello, it's my first time here. And I just wanted to speak on behalf of local vendors, street vendors specifically. This past weekend, some street vendors in front of Cafe Brio were approached by the police and told to move or else they were going to be cited, ticketed, et cetera. For the past six years, I have been a street vendor here in the city of Arcata. I was not present at that time. I was working at a farmer's market in Crescent City. Because our local farmer's market doesn't accept vendors, I choose to drive almost two hours on a Saturday morning in order to show my art legally. I have tried for the past six years to become a vendor at my local farmer's market on Saturdays, but have had no luck. The North Coast Growers Association claims to be artist-friendly in their business model and on their website. However, only allows artisans in as a secondary option during the winter when it is a slow season. The summer season is the height, oh, my goodness, I can't even. Anyway, long story short, as a community member, I would like to believe that the benefit of the market is how we can build, I'm all just combed up because of that boop. Anyway, I believe that inclusivity of not only the farmers, but the artisans and the musicians are important in the market. How do you go for two minutes?
Okay, so please feel free to send us those thoughts via email. I know it looks like you wrote out a lot. So if you want to send that to us via email, all council members are emailing on the city website. Also, this isn't going to be too heavy of a meeting, so there will be another comment period at the end of the meeting where you'll get three whole minutes to talk on an issue as well. So if you want to hang out and get to that point, too, I don't think our business items are going to take a ton of time, like sometimes they do.
Okay.
So there will be a three-minute period at the end as well.
Thank you. Yeah, I was skipping ahead, and then it just wasn't making sense to do that. So my main question right now, like, moving forward, is, is it still illegal to be a street, or is it still legal to be a street vendor? Before, the police were requesting paperwork called peddler's permits. Then when I went to the city hall, they said it didn't exist, so.
All right. Well, we'll have our city manager, or our environmental services director touch base with you. Again, yeah, it's hard to like do this back and forth during a meeting. So we'll have her touch base with you about that protocol because we did adopt kind of an outline for this probably about like six months ago, I would say.
Okay, perfect.
So, yeah, Emily Sinkhorn right here. She's your go-to.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Did we check with Zoom? Do we have anybody on Zoom? Okay. Okay, so we're going to take our Zoom comment, and I think we'll have just enough time to take one more in person. And then we'll be done with early oral communications. All right. All right, Darius, go ahead.
I seem to have lost the picture here.
We can hear you, so just go ahead with your comment. Thank you.
I would like to mention, like, they were talking about switching everything over to electricity. And I know that sounds good, but also, electricity, the price of electricity has been going up and still is kind of high for most people on low income to afford electricity, to heat, because electric heat is very expensive and uses up, you know, a lot of electricity to create heat. So I'm just wondering, you know, it would be great if we could find some ways of lowering the cost of electricity, and then we could go over to electricity completely. I'm fully in favor of electric power. But that's just my concern, is that you would lose the option of cheap gas. Because, for heating, that is, because gas is cheap for heating, as far as I understand. Also, I would like to bring up the problem of like the homeless populations. And what are we going to do about that? Because I think that it's becoming abrasive, a bit of a problem sometimes. That's all I have to say. I hope I didn't use my whole two minutes up yet.
Okay, thank you, Darius. We appreciate it. All right, we'll take our last in-person comment here this evening, and then we will move on from early oral communications.
Hi, my name is Peggy Martinez. I'm an Arcata resident. And first, thank you all for your work. I know that it's not always easy. I want to say that I'm thrilled to hear that we might be getting a new bus line. So thanks to everyone who's advocated and studies and whatnot, done everything to make that happen. I want to also talk briefly about K Street and the heavy traffic load that is now on K Street. And while I would like a linear park, well, I just think linear parks are great anywhere. I think in this case, because we don't really have a good option for the traffic load and the idea of the sidewalk width and the. for the traffic load and the idea of the, the sidewalk width and the parking need that the residents on K Street might have, and the children that live on K Street and go to school on K Street, to have a very, very impacted street and have the street to the, to the west of it, L Street, have no impact, I think is, is inequitable. I, I think it is, it is not a good long-term plan if we were to, you know, keep L Street as a linear park. Um, and again, I am really, you know, sort of sad to, to be asserting this. I just think that having all the traffic load beyond K Street is not a good long-term solution for our community needs. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Peggy. All right, that takes us to the end of early oral communications. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. Um, our next item, item number eight this evening, is the consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and are enacted in one motion. There's no separate discussion of any of these items, and if discussion is required, that item can be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. Item A, approve the minutes of the city council meeting of July 19th, 2023. Item B, bi-weekly report on dispersments. Item C, approve the response to the 2022-23 grand jury report, the Humboldt County Child Abuse Services Team, and authorize police chief to sign the response and direct staff to forward the response to the presiding judge of the Humboldt County Superior Court. Item D, approve the annual military equipment report per Assembly Bill Number 481. Item E, approve the purchase of one equipment trailer, $50,982.15, including tax and freight, and award the purchase contract to Felling Traders Incorporated. Approve the purchase of one CB 2.7 utility compactor roller, $75,556.02, including tax and freight, and award the purchase contract to Peterson Cat. And approve the purchase of one Layley broadcast spreader, $5,647.18, including tax and freight, and award the purchase contract to Turf Star Western, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. And item F, establish an ad hoc revenue advisory committee. Uh, are there any members of council or staff that would like to pull an item from consent?
I'd like to pull item A and E, but I had a quick question before I moved to that. I just wanted to address the woman who was asking about the art markets, and I'm sure that Emily has already mentioned it, but just in case, we do have a Sunday art market that just started. It's an art and music market, so something to think of.
An Arcata main, Arcata main street puts that on.
I just want to pull item F, very, very, very quickly.
I'm interested in that.
Okay, so we will be pulling, or are there any members of the public that would like to pull an item that has not been listed thus far? All right, so, uh, we have a motion minus, or well, we need a motion, minus items A, E, and F. So do we have a motion?
I apologize, I meant F if I said E.
Oh.
I think I did say E, but I meant F.
Yeah, you don't, you don't want to talk about trailers and freight?
No, thank you.
Okay, so just F and A then. All right, so, uh, do we have a motion for items B through D?
Yes.
Or E, B through E?
I move.
A and F.
Alex moves.
Okay. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for items B, C, D, and E. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries unanimously on that, um, and I'll defer to you here, Kimberly, for item A for the, or sorry, Councilmember White.
Um, I, I just wanted to see if we could add to the minutes on, um, it, I wanted to add that I had, um, mentioned something about the open house, and I was just hoping we could reflect, um, what I had said about the open house.
What did you say? In your schedule?
On, um, the, approve the minutes for city council on the, um, when we were, here, let me just pull it up here, I have it. Apologize, I had it right in front of me. So I had referenced the open house held during the pandemic and suggested that, um, now that we are no longer in the height of the pandemic, that we, um, might have another, and I just wanted to see if we could include that language into the minutes.
I need to know where you want to put that in the minutes.
So it would be the second to the last sentence. It says, "Councilmember White wanted to talk more about inclusionary zoning at the study sessions." And then, um, you would add there that I had referenced the open house held during the pandemic and suggested that this might be a, that the community was right to have another one now that we're no longer in the height of the pandemic," in whatever language that I used there.
Yeah, just write like under where it talks about what comments council members made.
On page 12.
Yeah, uh, second to the last on page 12, sorry.
Okay.
Okay, so, and then we would take a motion for the minutes as amended? All right, so do we have a motion for minutes as amended?
I'll make a motion as the minutes as amended.
I'll second it.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Uh, is there any public comment on, on this? All right, motion and second, all in favor to approve the minutes as amended?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries unanimously, and then that takes us to, uh, uh-oh, I got too many minutes and agendas in front of me. Uh, item F, so establish an ad hoc revenue advisory committee.
Did you have B?
No, we, we kept, B was fine.
Okay.
Yeah, F is the only other one we pulled. So, uh, go ahead, Meredith.
Um, so, um, this is really interesting, so basically, we asked the TOOT Committee to research, and they declined, even though it was sort of in their purview based on the municipal code, and that's fine. I just want to make sure, I just wanted, I just want to make sure that there were enough people, like, excited and willing to have a subcommittee, because this is pretty important. There's a lot of programs that are gonna be not funded if we can't figure out, like...
So I know that at least three, um, of the members of the, the TWO Talk were very interested in pursuing this and, and willing to put in the extra time and felt like it was something that they could stand behind. Um, I know we've had one or two, um, community members reach out, and I would encourage that if you know of anybody or can get anybody interested in, in volunteering for this committee, it, you know, it is a, it is a big task, and it is going to be a deep dive into looking at the, all of the tax options, trying to come up with the best either, um, single or multiple solutions, and recommending what to bring back to, um, the voters, who will ultimately decide whether or not there is a tax increase. So, you know, please pass on names, I'm more than willing to reach out if you've got somebody that you think might be interested, and we will probably, the ideas that will bring back a slate of folks that you can, that you all can appoint to the committee. Um, but it is going to be probably, I would say, at least every couple weeks, we would, this committee would, committee would have to meet probably over the next six months, um, and whether or not they're interested or not, maybe even be involved in some, uh, education and outreach after that on their own, too, so.
Yeah, so would it be like some kind of application process, and then we appoint them like we appoint any other committee, or any kind of vet, um, you know, what's the word?
Vetting.
Vetting, thank you, for when we put people on the committee?
I, that was, yeah, I think, I think that's the idea behind it, is to, we can, we can present, we can ask them for some basic information like we do for the other committees, and bring it back to all of you, and again, anything that you can do to do that outreach, too, would be helpful.
And about how many people are we looking for?
Um, I'm recommending, um, no more than seven, because anytime you get more than seven, it just becomes, um, very difficult to schedule meetings around other people's schedules, so we're looking at seven. That also gives us an odd number, so a quorum would be four, we've got a majority, and makes things simple.
Is there anything special that we have to do?
If this is gonna be like a big seven-person committee, do we have to make anything official?
Uh, no, we're suggesting an ad hoc committee, so it'll be, you know, temporary and just to this particular topic. Um, so it is, it has a much more flexible platform than like a special task force or a regular committee, so you would recommend, you know, send anybody, you know, my way or Tabitha's way, um, we will do some vetting, and then we would come back with an agenda item that'll just list all seven of them together for, for one approval. And then at that point, we'll kind of outline what we think the timeline would be for that group to work.
Awesome, so you heard it, reach out to Karen or Tabitha if you're interested in being on this very important ad hoc, ad hoc committee. Thank you.
So, um, I was, um, really excited, there were several people who had contacted me that were interested, but their question was if this was gonna be like a Brown Act procedure with, um, the public could participate, or would it be like a closed working group? And so I, I didn't know.
Yeah, ad hoc committees are not Brown Act committees, so they are typically small working groups that are coming up with a little list of recommendations that then come back to the public and the council for vetting.
Thank you.
And they don't have to be interviewed in public.
All right, I'll make a motion then to, um, approve item F, establish an ad hoc review advisory committee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any public comment on item F? Going once, going twice. All right, uh, then we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, four yeses. Okay, that moves us on now to our new business. Thank you, consent calendar. Um, so our first item under new business is to appoint a new planning commissioner for a term expiring March 31st, 2027. Uh, we had our interviews just before this meeting with two very qualified candidates, that makes our job hard. I was saying, why don't we just increase the number of planning commissioners that we have? That's right? No. Um, so, we can kind of open any discussion if anybody wants to talk about their thoughts and feelings, or I can open up that discussion, um, as well. Again, I really thought both candidates were super highly qualified. Um, I know it's always awkward to talk about you guys while we're in the room. Um, I do really appreciate the, uh, kind of just extra effort, um, that Abigail put into her application, um, and also I think that the county planning perspective is, is really interesting to have, um, and just kind of seeing that process from both like the permitting side and the county planning commission side. Um, so I'll kind of open it up there as the way that I'm leaning.
Well, I, I can just say that I know I have been completely lobbied for an additional woman on that committee, and, um, even though we've come up with some men in the past and appointed them, um, there's commissioners that would like to have more of a balance, even though we have a council that's all female, they still feel like they would not, they don't want to have an all-male or just one female on the planning commission, they think it should be more diverse. So, I know, you know, I'm, anyway, that's my comment on that, and I, I realize that a balance is always good, and I'm sure people feel that way about us.
I really, um, appreciate both of your, um, applications and the willingness to serve. This is, um, a really big commitment. Um, I really appreciate, boy, that, son. Um, I really, um, appreciated, um, Abigail's, um, background in, um, planning and ministerial things and, um, on the coastal commission. I also liked her answer, um, about, um, looking, when you're looking at, uh, and synthesizing information to, um, check in with public comment, um, to see that what interests stakeholders. Um, I thought that was a really, um, great point to make, so.
Um, so, I wanted to address before I talk about the two, I, I've really been hearing from the constituents that, um, interviewing for the commission and the committees in public, um, has kept a lot of folks from moving forward, and, um, rather than in the conference room, which is what we've been doing in the past, and I think it changed when we hit the pandemic, and so folks have been wondering, will we return to the pre-pandemic practices? I know, I, I do realize it is more transparent, um, but I'm wondering if it might be a barrier. I know when I applied for the planning commission, I got to be in the conference room, and I don't know that I would have applied otherwise if it would have been out here. So I just want to commend you, um, both for being out in, you know, the public eye. Um, I know that's difficult.
Can I add a point to that, Kimberly?
Absolutely.
Not to interrupt you, but I just think that the reason that we do that now is because that's the only way we have hybrid capability, right? And so because we're doing hybrid meetings ever, yeah, since the pandemic, um, the only way to have those, you know, hybrid option, because we've, in the past, I guess now we have more and more people coming in person, but a lot of our applicants were, were zooming in, uh, for their interviews, and so I think that's why we made that change, but as we're kind of moving more back into the in-person, especially with candidates showing up in person, I think we can maybe talk about that, but, yeah, that's a good point.
It prepares them for being in the public eye.
But, yeah, and too, it does prepare them, yeah, for sitting up here and doing it, so, but it's a good point.
So, since everybody's weighing in, I'll wait before I talk about the individual candidates and let, um, Alex weigh in here, just looks like she wants to say something.
Well, I, I just feel the same. I thought it was good when we had an opportunity to be in, in the conference room to talk about the candidates and, it's, you know, it was, but that was something that happened for a long time, and so since I've been back on the council, it's all been in public. And I, um, thank everyone for actually enduring that and making that, uh, something that they can withstand. So with that, you know, I'm...
Kimberly's gonna put in her thoughts, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I would like to, um, say that I wish we could do both of you. Um, it's really tough. I really appreciated that you came to the table, um, and brought your tribal experience, and, um, and as a planner, both of you bring that to the table. Um, I, I guess, um, the fact that Abigail has lived here for five years really rang for me, because she walks where I walk, and she knows the place she lives across the street, um, she has experience on the local coastal, uh, commission, and that's something extra that, um, I think would be really useful on the planning commission. Um, it's tough, I, I would love to see you both on there, because you both bring, um, your individual expertise, um, and they, you know, overlapped a little bit, but there was so much that you each brought to the table that the other didn't have. Um, so have I, I guess we're gonna, are we gonna talk amongst ourselves, or what does that look like?
Well, I mean, I think we all kind of shared which way that we're, uh, leaning, so I think we could have a motion if somebody wants to make a motion, and then we can, uh, discuss with our vote.
All right, well, I will go ahead and make a motion then to appoint, um, Abigail Strickland to the planning commission for a term that ends March 31st, 2027.
Second for that?
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Wait.
Oh, yeah, we have to take public comment.
And I do have one online.
Yeah, um, okay, so if there's anybody that would like to public, uh, public comment, make a public comment on, uh, this item here in person first, line up? And then we'll head to Zoom, I know we have somebody on Zoom. All right, so it'll be three.
Good evening, Gregory Daggett. I think this time around, you're, you're doing a better job at, um, as far as the interview process, because what I heard last time around, when we had our three candidates, that the comment was made at the very end of the night about the person's, um, age, and that we had a lot of older folks on the commission, um, you know, and had that been a really, uh, uh, an interview process where it was a pain job, you, that was, that could have been a possible lawsuit right there. So, in this case, you know, you have somebody that basically did a lot for the city on the standpoint of volunteering and being in a lot of different organizations, and I heard that he was, he was quite hurt about at the end of the night, so, don't know whether you're aware of that. And I actually followed this up, because, you know, it is, it is mentioned often, um, by comments by people, and I have a lot of folks that I know in interviewing process at the university in California, and it's, the same thing happens there, but in their case, they're, uh, it's an unspoken word that they never, they never, uh, mentioned that, but they definitely use it in their hiring process, that anybody that's a certain age, a tenure position at the universities, they're not going to hire them. So it is something that is, um, age discrimination is, is out there, and it's definitely happening, and even in places where we think at the university that would never happen. It's, you know, these people have been tenure for a while, and they were pretty sincere by telling me that, you know, that it's happening, so, um, I think, um, you know, you gotta be pretty sensitive when you're, I mean, you need to, you need to talk about the qualifications of the candidates, because last time was sort of like, you already had made up your mind, and there wasn't too much, uh, comments going on exactly, exactly what was going on, and, um, so, uh, I think we need to be, uh, doing a good job at that, better job at that. Thanks.
Hi, I just wanted to acknowledge what awesome candidates that we have for the commission. I mean, both of them, um, are, um, really active in the planning community locally, and I think that whatever decision that you guys make, um, is going to be a good decision. So I want to give them both, uh, kudos, and then I also want to make a comment, um, just on some of the, um, comments that were made about the interview process. Um, I entirely disagree with you that they should be in the chambers. I think that in preparing a planning commissioner for, um, the duality and some of the conflicts that they'll have to eng- and some of the conflicts that they'll have to engage with the public, doing their interviews in a public forum is going to prepare them to serve your commission better. And so I professionally disagree with you, but, but that's okay. And you guys have a tough decision ahead of you. So thank you.
I actually missed the interview process. I didn't like notice it. And this leads me to kind of question how we do things here in the city when it comes to interviewing candidates for a committee and/or reading and presenting proclamations and ceremonial matters. That comes into a regular meeting. And yet, a special meeting is held earlier than regular meeting to interview candidates for a committee. And I think maybe we need to really look at the system and how we do it. And the second thing I would like to put in there is that apparently there's two qualified candidates. Oh, first of all, I want to agree with Gregory. That last three-person interview process was very, very disappointing to me for a variety of reasons, including the ones that Gregory mentioned. But why is the planning committee bigger than the city council in terms of numbers? Because it's really awkward sometimes to have to have these side tables and stuff. But if we have to have more people than the seats on the dais, why not two candidates, what's in the bylaws or whatever to prevent you appointing both people to be on the, on the planning commission?
All right.
The online comment took their hand down.
Okay. Well, then we had a, I hope Bridget had it written down. We had a motion and a second to appoint Abigail Strickland for a term expiring March 31st, 2027. All right, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ethan, so much for your participation. And honestly, we've had kind of a high turnover on the planning commission lately. So I'm sure there will probably be another spot opening up. Who knows? Hopefully not, though. But we also have a lot of other wonderful committees to be involved in. So congratulations, Abigail, and thank you for both hanging out and being here. So we appreciate it.
Looking forward to see you on the dais.
Yes.
Cheers, thank you.
All right, and so that takes us to our next business item this evening under new business, or yes, under new business. Item B, which is to approve modifications to the design for the 2023 Arcata Annual Paving Project and authorize the city engineer to make those edits. So can we have a staff report from city engineer, Netra Kotri?
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, council members, and the member of the public. The item in front of you is follow-up from the June 21st meeting where we had a bid award for annual paving project. During the award process, there were public comment received that a block of Edge Street between 17th and 18th Street does not include a bike lane. So we should be modifying that. So after the meeting, we had a quick meeting at our transportation safety committee where we presented an alternative to that, which I'll be showing you here. But before you and I go there, I will just say, in our original plan, the way it is presented is, was to have, there is an existing seven and a half sidewalk here, eight-foot parking lane, 10-foot travel lane, 10-foot travel lane, eight-foot parking, and five-foot sidewalk. So there was not a room for add a bike lane, so we had proposed to do a share-o. Based on the public comments, and most of the comments were correct because we have a bike lane on the next block and the previous block. So it makes sense to put a bike lane. However, there was not enough room to do that, so we didn't put that. So what we did is we created an alternative here, and this was presented at the TSC. So what this does is it keeps the existing sidewalk that is seven and a half foot wide in place, removes the parking on the west side, and replaces that with a bike lane, and keeps the travel lane 10-foot, 10-foot, and a parking width of seven and a half and sidewalk on the other side. At the TSC meeting, we did not receive a lot of public comment, but as a committee, they recommended this option to move forward with. Since we did not receive a lot of public comment at the TSC, we tried to reach out to the residents in the block of Edge Street. We knocked the doors. We are not able to get comments from every single person, but most of the people who provided comments, they were positive. They were excited about the bike lane. Not a lot of negative comments too regarding the removal of parking. So at this point, we are recommending to move forward with adding a bike lane and removing parking from the west side of the Edge Street between 17th and 18th.
Thank you, Netra. All right, do we have any questions or comments from the council before we open it up to public comment?
I'd like to thank you for doing that and thank the transportation safety committee. I just want to say that we didn't, well, at least I didn't vote for the complete streets ordinance to check a box. I really believe in it. It was actually the foundation of my campaign. So I was really appreciated doing those road audits with Dan Burton because I think it really validated how I feel. I know that some of these decisions that we're going to make moving forward are going to be difficult and a little painful, but really going to be committed moving forward to holding us accountable when we do redo these roads. I know that right now we're working on our Isaacson Sustainability Project. I hope that, that we're going to hold to the complete streets with that again. And I just, I know that with the complete streets ordinance, there are very, very specific exceptions. And so I'd really like to make sure that those are, that we're really looking at them. You know, some of the other things that I would like to explore as far as complete streets and go are, again, looking at H and G streets and seeing road diets, which was something that was a huge takeaway for me from Dan Burton and maybe even narrowing those to one lane. I'd like to look at making speed limits 20 miles an hour. I'd like to do another walking audit in Valley West. I'd like to do, have the transportation safety committee or maybe an ad hoc committee do a parking audit around the gateway area plan. And I'd also like to look at, and these are all from the, the walking audit, which I thought was amazing, so thank you. I'd look to, like to look at eliminate at least four to six parking spots on the plaza and turning them into bike parking. So thank you again. If you don't mind, if you'll indulge me, I'd like to read Stacy gave me a comment because she's not here. So I'm going to read what she said too, so we can get her input. I hope that's okay. Stacy says, "We have adopted a complete streets policy and this paving project gives us perfect opportunity to follow through with our commitment. My suggestion is to remove the parking on each street between 17th and 18th streets in order to accommodate the bike lane. The Open Door Clinic will be relocating soon, and because of this, I believe the impacts to parking will be minimal. If we are to move in the direction of making our town more safely accessible to all modes of transportation, then some sacrifices will have to be made. Removing one block of parking is, in my opinion, a small sacrifice to make the pursuit of the bigger picture." So those are both of our opinions, so thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Kimberly. I know you had something you want to add.
No, I just wanted to concur with Meredith in that it felt kind of redundant that we would have a, a special vote for something that was already a gimme. It was already in the complete streets. And we got a lot of feedback from the community, and so I concur. I also appreciate that you brought up Valley West. I just did a Ollie presentation and talked about some of the pedestrian bicycle challenges out there. And I would love to see another walk audit out there. We had one. I'm gonna tell you what I, probably gonna misspeak. I was trying to pull up my PowerPoint with the dates that the last one was done. And I'm not finding it readily, but I think it's time to do another one. We have lots and lots of new residents out there biking and new pedestrians. And so, yeah, thanks, that's it.
And one more thing also, as long as we're talking about this, I do, I know school's starting soon. So I would like to look again at Ross and Grant. Again, my children have gone to school there. I talked with the public safety committee. That is a real concern, so I'd like to look at what we can do to mitigate that. Even if it's just lowering the speed limit, I don't know, but I'd like to see some solutions on that. Thank you.
And I concur on that one as well.
So Dan Burton was talking a lot about K Street. And I know we're going to have slowing down for the school, for Montessori School. We're going to be having a 15 mile an hour area there. But I do think his ideas for, some of his ideas that he had for K Street is something that we should look at. And at this time, except for the area up in, on 18th Street and that area where we just, and H, and went back up there. I looked at it. I can see where it just was missing. And I'm glad that you took that right back and got that fixed right away. We've gotten emails requesting us to support it. Looks like we won't have any issues here with not supporting it. But I would really like to have us look at K Street and not worry right now about GNH. I know, Meredith, you want to worry about GNH, but I would go to K.
I want to worry about them all.
Well, you know, I don't know what we're going to do about every street in town. But K Street is really, K Street is one of our major streets. We get funding from the federal government in order to take care of that. It falls, it's an, what is it, an F Street, or I've forgotten what the category is.
It's an arterial street.
Yes, but there's a certain amount of funding that comes in when it's been repaired and taken care of. We've had a sign that measured G, and the federal government has all put money in to prepare and redo the surfacing of the street. But I think K Street is very problematic, and it's something we should definitely start to deal with.
Roundabouts, roundabouts on every intersection.
Well, Dan Burton would have liked that. I, I will add, it's just very apt that, you know, this is coming before us. We have our council study sessions coming up and that kind of coinciding with Dan Burton being in town. Even, you know, for this design here, HCOG, who brought Dan Burton here, also sent us a letter very late before our meeting. But they, they got it in, just again, you know, showing their support for us following this complete streets policy, removing parking. And so I, I think, you know, it's really sparked in, it sounds like, all of us, a lot of us. But I mean, just especially when I'm now walking around town, driving around town, looking at this and just thinking about how can we create things that are not car-centric and do not, you know, promote necessarily that like we are, we are doing this improvement because of cars? And to kind of reframe our thinking and, you know, it might be uncomfortable sometimes to reframe that thinking, but to begin to think, you know, how can we prioritize multimodal transportation? And prioritize, you know, especially in that corridor. That is the corridor that, you know, takes students from campus down, you know, into town, right? If they're riding a bike, that's how they're going to go, hopefully, if they're following the, the rules of the road. So, so again, resounding support for this. It sounds, you know, we've received many emails of support of going this way. And I think, you know, I do agree, I have two pages worth of ideas of things that were coming to my mind, you know, hearing Dan Burton speak and going to some of the walk audits and saying, we should change this, we should do this. And so again, LK Wood, GNH, K, they're all, yeah, yeah, LK Wood. We didn't talk about that one yet. Yeah, write that one down. I see you guys both. And, and so just again, just so many opportunities to look how we can, you know, improve our bike lanes, improve access for bikes and peds, and just make people feel safer getting places. Because again, this town is, if you are able, highly walkable. And so we should encourage those that are able to walk places or bike places to do so. And so I think this is a great start of that.
So I just, I wanted to follow up with one other thing. Often our markings on the street get worn away. And that's a really important component in order to have safe streets. So that is something I would want to bring forward that you sometimes can't tell what, what is what.
I think they, we just repainted K Street a little, which I guess is a, not falling under the complete streets because it's just maintenance.
That's correct.
So, okay, cheers.
All right, so at that point, we will invite public comment on this item. And then if we have any final last minute thoughts, we can bring those in. So is there anybody here in person that would like to comment? If you would like to comment on this item, please head up to the podium or line up.
I have something to say about this because I live right here. First of all, from Sunset all the way downtown, the sidewalks are consistently the same size, except for here. Somebody made a decision to widen them, and that pushed everything out in the street. So that's why you're, you've got the dilemma you're in. So the, really the solution is, is to move the curb back in and make the sidewalk the same consistency all the way downtown. So then you have a bike lane, and then you still have parking. And the reason why you still need parking is because you have a lot of students that are out of town right now. There's apartment buildings all over the place in this area. This is like the most intense parking area in the whole city. And so what you're seeing is when you knocked on the doors, there weren't any students around to ask their opinion. But I, because I live in here, I see what's happening. And it's not just my opinion, it's also the trustees of the University of the State College System of California. Because when they had Cal Poly down in Long Beach, they specifically said to them with the Craftsman Project, you're only giving one parking spot per four, four students, totally unacceptable because you have basically students that are flying only two ways, Burbank and LAX. So they need to drive to get up here. They need to drive to explore. These are the trustees that are actually making this point. So I'm basically, it's not affecting my parking spot, but I'm just saying they're going to be highly impacted this. And you do have an alternative where you can still have a safe bicycle, and you can also have the parking, and you don't need to eliminate it. Because when you eliminate it, they're, I'll tell you what they're going to do. They're going to be parked going around down to 17th Street. They're going to turn and go into the neighborhoods there and park, you know, permanently, probably for a week because they have no place to go. I mean, they basically, these apartments were built in the 60s. And, you know, compared to these standards now, they're pretty good-sized parking lots. But, you know, we have a lot of students that are doubling up in those units, and they need the street parking. So it's going to impact them. And, I mean, you can say, I mean, I don't like cars myself, but I live in the reality that they're going to need cars. And, and I'm surprised that this isn't getting the attention because it's, it's crazy on H Street. You got, there's no law enforcement at all. Everyone drives whatever they want to do. We have skateboards, we have bicyclists. They, they're coming from the opposite direction down in the, in the bike lane. I've even seen a father teach his teenage kid to go head-on in the bicycle lane going down the street. We've had cars in this area that are running to the telephone pole, took out all their power in the neighborhood. We've had cars that flipped over in front of my house. We've had cars that have run into three parked cars that I, when I was working out in the front of the house. And I have countless neighbors that have told me about cars that have been plowed into all over that. So I'd get your focus on a lot of.
All right, any other in-person comments before we move to Zoom? All right, do we have any comments on Zoom on this item?
We do. The first one is Darius. Go ahead, Darius.
Hello, yeah, I have, I have similar concerns to, to this other person who was just speaking. You know, we can't just keep cutting, getting rid of parking. I mean, perhaps that solution of making the sidewalks smaller would be a work, a workable option. I also, I, I, you know, when I try to put my garbage out, sometimes it's packed, you know, from all, from one end of the street to the other. And I can't put my garbage out on the street, which I need to do on, on Sunday nights. And so I see parking is a big problem in, in, in this, in Arcata, and we need to address that. And I was thinking, we, we need like, we might need like a parking lot area, just, just one place where all the cars can go and park. Because, I mean, parking is a real big problem here. So that's just my concern is, is like, we should try to find, maybe try and find some, if we're going to get rid of parking in one place, we should add parking somewhere else. Because we're going to have to. Cars should have to park somewhere, you know? And, you know, I don't think, I don't think it's, it's good, you know, that I can't put my garbage out on Sundays sometimes because it's parked, you know, back, you know, bumper to bumper all the way down the old street. That's all I have to say. And I live on, I'm on 9th Street between 7th and 9th Street, so I'm pretty close by. So what happens over there affects me here too. Just, just letting you know.
Okay, thank you, Darius. Do we have any other comments on Zoom?
Our last public comment online is Colin. Go ahead, Colin.
Hello, good evening. This is Colin Fisk, Executive Director of CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. I wanted to thank the council for responding to requests to fill in this gap in the bike lane as part of the paving project. Also thank the transportation safety committee for recommending the bike lane be included and staff for coming up with the design, including the bike lane. It seems like everyone's pulling in the same direction here now. And we, of course, strongly encourage you to approve the new design with the bike lane between 17th and 18th Street, which addresses a longstanding safety and mobility challenge for people riding bikes on one of the city's main thoroughfares. mobility challenge for people riding bikes on one of the city's main thoroughfares. There is a sort of underlying problem here, however, which several of you alluded to, which is that the bike lane should have been included in the paving project by default. It shouldn't have required advocacy or debate at the three public meetings to get this bike lane painted. There's a reason that you adopted the complete streets policy last year. And that policy calls for automatically including complete facilities in all street projects, including repaving and restriping and rehabilitation projects. And by complete facilities, the policy specifies facilities for walking and biking and transit that are safe and comfortable for people of all ages and abilities. So think of bike lanes or crosswalks that a child could comfortably use or an elder or a person with mobility limitations or other disabilities. There are some limited exceptions to the policy, but none of those apply here. So the complete streets policy says if you repave or restripe a street and there are facilities missing for people to walk or bike safely, you just include them. In this case, you would just paint the bike lane. The purpose is to accelerate the creation of safe and welcoming networks for walking and biking throughout the city by adding the facilities when it's cheap and easy to do it, when you're already doing a project. Our experience with this project and some other projects, including the recent restriping of K Street, has us a little concerned that the complete streets policy isn't being fully implemented. So in addition to approving the bike lane in this particular project, we ask that you also reaffirm the council's commitment to the full implementation of the policy as written. And I would note that the TSC also identified this as an issue and added to its vote an explicit affirmation of support for the complete streets policy. So we just ask that you do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin. All right, are there any other Zoom? Okay, I do like Colin's point and I really, you know, would like to reaffirm what the TSC's recommendation was as well and that we just, as we revisit this, kind of as revisiting our complete streets policy and, you know, seeing how we vote tonight, knowing that, you know, that's what we support, that's what we want going forward. So I like the idea of just reaffirming that commitment.
So I found the information that I was looking for. Just wanted to first thank Colin because he's the one who helped write this article and for Valley West. It was March twenty twenty-two and it was, we talked about some of the suboptimal situations, that there's a very dangerous intersection at Giannoli Lane and West End Road, which is also, you know, what part of this repaving project, but it's full of opportunities of mishaps. And it was in 2018, a team led by the UC Berkeley Safe Transportation Research Education Center, SafeTrack, conducted a pedestrian and bicycle safety study in Valley West. So it's been about five years. Observations done along the frequently used paths in Valley West indicated poor or missing sidewalks, lack of signage, difficult marked and unmarked crossings, challenging roundabouts, inadequate street lighting and other related issues. Pedestrian visibility, poor signage, path connectivity are key factors among these problems. So, yeah, yeah, I just think it would be great if we could revisit that as we have a lot more students, a lot more residents out there. And, you know, when my daughter was getting ready to get her license to get on the road, well, I'm going to give you fair warning, you might see me on a bike here soon.
Our Assistant City Engineer just reminded me that there is an option, which we did look into initially, to reduce that walkway from seven and a half to five, which will allow parking and bike lane. However, I would say the reason it was eliminated initially was we want to be bike and ped friendly city. Right, right now we are pedestrian friendly city, we are, designation is bronze, we want to go to silver. So reducing that to lesser sidewalks not be a good idea. So.
Yeah, and again, Dan Burn said like five feet is like the absolute like bare bottom, mid above. I mean, I, yeah, not trying to, I mean, I think all of our sidewalks should be over five feet wide.
Sure. And that will also add.
It's nothing.
And it's expensive.
Yeah, expensive, it'll be thirty to forty thousand dollars more.
So I'd like to make a recommendation that the council approve the modification to the design for the 2023 Arcata Annual Paving Project and authorize the city engineer to make those edits. And I'd also like for us to affirm our support for the complete streets policy.
All right, we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second? All right, we have a motion, a second. Any last minute thoughts to add before we call for a vote? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries unanimously. And again, thank you folks from CRTP for bringing that to our attention. And also thank you to our Transportation Safety Committee for bringing this recommendation before us. We're taking the recommendation of our Transportation Safety Committee. So there we go. All right, that takes us now to oral and written communications. And so again, the city appreciates public input and this time is provided for people to address the council on items not on the agenda. Please note, again, pursuant to the Brown Act, we cannot take action or discuss items not listed on the posted agenda. At the end of all oral and written communications, the council may respond to statement and supported requests that require action will be set for a future agenda. Folks addressing the council will be limited, limited to three minutes right now. And if you are here in person, please line up at the podium. If you are on Zoom, raise your little Zoom hand. Or if you are on your phone, press star nine now to raise your hand. Again, you'll have three minutes, so please head up to the podium when you are ready to comment. Take it away, Joanne.
Hi, my name's Joanna McGary and I have to admit that I was a little unsettled earlier when I gave my earlier oral communication. But climate change is number one always. But I did send you an email and I did get responses this week from a couple of you. So thank you, but hope to continue the conversation. I think I had also sent an email the previous meeting about my concern on transparency and maybe even honesty about what's going on once decisions are made at the dais about such things as dog parks. And then encountering a person who works for the city saying, well, that's not necessarily what's going to happen now. And I said, well, what's going to happen? And I was referred to Emily Sinkhorn, who was not available because she was, her final days before a vacation. And then nobody else had any information for me on what is happening with dog parks. And I just need to say that in my walking around town, you know, we have a lot of children in Arcata, but we have a lot of dogs in Arcata. And the recreation needs of people with dogs are great there and they're not being met by our community and not fast enough. And I want to know what's happening with the Larson Park and the Helen Park dog parks and the timeline on them. And why aren't we necessarily looking at some temporary options at other places like the D Street area near Eleventh? Because people need to be able to recreate with their children and their animals in their neighborhoods and not have to get in a car or walk or bike across town to recreate. And so can anybody enlighten me, please, to what's going on with the dog parks in this community? And the other two issues I won't bring up here at this meeting, but it really is disappointing how shabby our downtown area is. And I haven't been up to Valley West lately, but I know there's issues there. And it involves biohazards and not getting enough action quickly enough to deal with them. And then, of course, there's always the issue of the vulnerable and the unhoused and how we're spending our money in dealing with that issue. But can somebody answer me on this dog park issue, please? I heard different information from someone else. So can somebody give me correct information?
Get back to you about that one offline. Again, we don't do back and forths up here.
But, you know, you said one thing and then something's changing and we're not knowing about it. So it's not transparent.
I don't know, I can't answer your question because I don't know what's happening with it either. So we'll have an update at an upcoming meeting about it and we can all know about it in the public forum. Thank you. All right.
Okay, a couple of meetings ago, I brought up the sound element, which I basically said total failure from the standpoint of City Council, Planning Commission. And I think at that time I said I was going to go contact the Attorney General about this. And I, I did not because I was contacted by the city that, you know, you're going to have some police officers being hired. So could you please give us some more time on that? But I'm pretty disappointed in the standpoint, another aspect of this, which is the safety element, which is basically a conversation we're talking about just before this and bicycles, because we have zero enforcement going on in this city from the standpoint of cars just doing whatever they want and bicycles even going the wrong direction and skateboards going the wrong directions. And it is just out of control that, and I, it's just like you're saying, oh, we're going, we're going to do this and that. But it, you have to have law enforcement. If you don't have law enforcement, and this is what every major city in the United States knows, they, they put a camera at intersection if you, if you can't have an officer there. They get a picture, you make, you make some income off it. And, you know, I know I'm not off on this because I didn't contact the Attorney General, but he sent me a letter, a newsletter, and it was exactly the conversation I had with you. Environmental justice and social planning. He was talking about air, he was talking about noise and increase. And he also said that it wasn't an excuse just because we're having the pressure that we have to build and have more houses, that we're not going to just like turn our backs on these other areas. So there is total failure in this city in those areas. And I've been addressing this for like a year and a half and I've been giving you time to like get your act together and nothing has happened. So you kind of have this attitude, well, you know, so, yeah, we, we put it in writing and all this. You are not on the streets, you're not bicycling. I walk every night, I bicycle, I see it from one intersection, H and Sixteenth, because I'm working outside a lot. And it's not a safe place. It's not a safe kid, place for a kid to go across the street. It is not safe at all. And it's just, I don't know what the problem is with this city because I've lived in, I've lived in Santa Barbara, Marin, Sonoma County, I've lived in Orange, I've lived in, up in the Sierras, Sacramento. And it's like, they all take action, you know? It's like, what is wrong with this city that they don't take any action? They just do nothing. And I even brought it up with the officers about a year ago and it's like they confirmed to me that there is nothing going on from the standpoint. So it's just, you've sort of like lost control. I, I don't know whether you're just afraid or something that you're going to have, you know, a lot of pissed off people if you start like giving them tickets and enforcing the law. I have no idea, but things need to change.
Good evening, I'm Fred Wise of ArcataOne.com. First, I look forward to our joint study session. Thank you. I look forward to our joint study session, August 22nd is the first of three study sessions. And I hope the public comes and watches this. I'm going to refer to the Community Development Director's video presentation that came out on Friday, June 28th, fifteen and a half minutes. The video and the transcription are both on ArcataOne.com. I sent a letter to you and the commissioners on this. In referring to the state mandates, laws on waivers and concessions, there's a quote as a conclusion, quote, "And our design standards and community benefits programs are unlikely to be implemented due to waivers and concessions." The community benefits program and the Gateway Code are pretty much the backbone of what we've been doing for the last year and a half. If we're now told that these programs are not likely to be implemented, this is a problem. We also have a situation that, from my point of view, yet one more time, our director either did not think this through or was deficient in discussing this with the public and the commission. Either of those conditions is not a good situation. To withhold information, of course, is a violation of the Brown Act. My question is, what are we doing here? And I greatly look forward to the council's participation in this process. At last week's Planning Commission meeting, the other considerations table was discussed. This is a listing of some, not all, of items that were not in accordance with the first draft of the Gateway Area Plan. A, a year ago, a representative from the Humboldt Association of Realtors gave a presentation to the Planning Commission and asked, quote, "Please consider adding at least a 10% requirement of owner occupied units to the Gateway Plan." Staff's recommendation was that the current policy supports homeownership. I disagree. I don't think it does or does very minimally or ineffectively. And I'd like to tell the council how much time is allotted to a discussion of this matter, but I can't because it wasn't discussed, not one second. The other item that I've referred to many times is the request to create a new zone type around the Creamery District, not the Creamery Building, but the whole district. This is shown as coming from a public member. The information that's not on the table indicates that it's coming from me. As I've pointed out numerous times, this came from the former Planning Commission Chair, Julie Bostedelcock, not from me. Again, the staff recommends that this be done in a respectful manner in the Form-based Code. There's nothing in the Form-based Code about any of this. I'm sure this will be corrected, but I wanted to bring it to your attention. Thank you.
Thanks. Is there anybody else here in person that would like to comment? All right, we'll move to online. Are there any oral and written communication comments online?
We have one. Darius, go ahead.
Yeah, hello, I'd like to address the situation with, with the homeless. I see that there's an increase in homeless, like all across, I mean, I've been watching the news and, I mean, there's a lot of homeless now. And it's probably going, only going to increase unless we do something about it. So I'd like to know, what are we doing about it? I mean, I, I don't want, you know, they, they, there's a lot of them are mentally ill and maybe not all of them, but a lot of them are. And it's, it's, it's a risk. You know, just, I, I mean, lately, I don't even want to go out, outside very much anymore because of that. So, you know, I mean, we need to be compassionate, it's true, but like, you know, they're going to, you know, if they, we give them a house, they're going to trash it. We need to make sure that we can give them a house and it won't get trashed and that they'll actually make something out of their lives. But that requires, you know, infrastructure, psychologists, doctors, you know, medicine and treatment. You know, what are we, what are we going to do to treat and, and get these homeless people not homeless anymore? That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other online comments? Okay, so that takes us to the end of oral communications this evening. Thank you, folks, for your comments. And that will take us now into our council and staff reports. So, I don't know, we are going to have a report from our City Attorney Nancy Diamond and Environmental Services Staff on the status of the electrification ordinance.
Great, well, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members. Just wanted to start with a little bit of background and our intention tonight is really to share the status of the all electric initiative, specifically the ordinance that our Energy Committee Chair alluded to, and also just its unclear future that City Attorney Nancy Diamond will touch on. So just for some background, it has been a goal of the council to develop something around building decarbonization and incentives or requirements for fuel switching towards all electric uses. As far back as at least 2018, 19 fiscal year, during that time, the city staff began to research whether reach codes or ordinance mechanisms could be utilized. And then in the 2019, 2020 fiscal year council goals, the council really codified the all electric initiative, which laid out some pretty specific priorities for addressing greenhouse gas emissions in the two most emitting sectors, buildings and transportation. And that really included researching mechanisms to require or incentivize new kind of private development or any new development to really utilize just all electric construction. And then also in 2019, the climate action planning really kicked off, being led by the county. So all that was going really well and through 2019. And then, as we know, COVID put that on hold as we really focused on essential services. We got back later to working on this in later of 2020. Staff provided an update to the council in December of 2020 on potential options to, again, start to shift more development to all electric construction. And then it was really in goal setting in 2021 in spring, that staff received direction to really write an ordinance and to go that route. So really through 2022, Environmental Services staff did a lot of research with other jurisdictions, researching cost effectiveness studies for this type of work. We work closely with the city attorney and our building department and really put together what we thought could be a strong draft. We received input from the Energy Committee. And then most recently, the Energy Committee provided thorough review at its March 2023 meeting. And the recommendation was for city staff to start to conduct public outreach about the ordinance. And then as our, our committee chair alluded to, there's a court decision on the City of Berkeley's existing and similar ordinance. And so now we just really wanted our city attorney to share just how that decision could really affect where we go from here.
Thank you, Emily. Yeah, good afternoon, evening. It's still sunny out. So yes, as has been mentioned, as you already know, the Ninth Circuit, a panel of three judges from the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals has ruled that these types of ordinance should be implemented. judges from the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals has ruled that these types of ordinances that ban any new gas infrastructure are preempted under federal law. The specific law is the Energy Policy and Conservation Act. That's a law that is used to create and define conservation standards for energy use and water use for, and energy efficiency for appliances. And so you'll see, it's not done for every single appliance, but for many appliances, you'll see these various ratings, energy use, water use, and energy efficiency. And that's all under the federal act. Nobody previously had ever read the federal act to preempt this kind of state or local law. So this is a brand-new decision. It is upending prior decisions from the Ninth Circuit. Needless to say, there we are, stuck with it, and it has absolutely put on hold any more of these types of ordinances. The ordinance that Arcata had drafted was modeled very closely on the City of Berkeley's ordinance, and that's also been very popular and in use throughout the state. And what it would have done is prohibited any new gas infrastructure being installed in new buildings, and that's what Berkeley's did. Berkeley's ordinance was adopted in 2019. They were sued in 2020 by the California Restaurant Association, arguing that they have members in their association that would like to someday own a restaurant in Berkeley and use gas appliances, and they're unable to do that under the new ordinance. And so procedurally, and I can go into more substance if you want, in terms of the argument, but procedurally, where we are now is that a petition for rehearing en banc has been filed, and that means that there's a petition pending before the Ninth Circuit to have the entire Ninth Circuit hear the decision. And that is pending. It's been well-briefed, not only by the City of Berkeley, but by numerous interested jurisdictions on both sides. But this has attracted national attention. So even prior to the decision that was issued by the Ninth Circuit Panel of Three, there was Amica's participation by the federal government on behalf of the Energy Policy and Conservation Act, and they took a position very firmly saying that this is an overreach. This is not what the federal law does. The federal law is limited in scope, and they, you know, explained the history of how that law is applied and the practical current use of the federal law. It received Amica's participation by a very large group of states, including the State of California, the National City, League of Cities, what is it, the National League of Cities? The California County Association, the, and it goes on and on. I mean, it's really received national attention. So, you know, on the one hand, the en banc panel could overturn the decision of the three-judge panel and restore, you know, everybody's understanding of how the federal law works, in which case then you're green-lighted to go forward with the ordinance. However, that could be appealed to the Supreme Court. And, you know, who knows what would happen if it, if it were appealed to the Supreme Court? Yeah, so, you know, ultimately, really, the best fix is a federal legislative fix that clarifies the scope of preemption, whether that's a good one or, you know, or a practical one or not a viable one, but there we go. So I have been working with staff and, as they've been working with the Energy Committee in figuring out how to implement in concept this type of greenhouse gas reduction measure. And it is one of the primary measures in the draft Climate Action Plan, the county-wide Climate Action Plan. So it's something that everybody's going to be wrestling with, is how do we reduce our greenhouse gas emissions if we can't start implementing that particular measure? So, you know, if you have any questions on litigation, I'm happy to get into more detail, but otherwise, you know, they can talk about the alternatives and the directions we're going.
Yeah, my question has to do with alternatives, I guess, not, not legal things. I don't know if you guys are going to touch on this, but, because, yeah, reach codes come up a lot, especially to, like, I'm on the Board of RCA, we talk about reach codes a lot. We all went to that Civic Well Conference, they talked about reach codes a lot. I mean, and so how, you know, could that be used as a mechanism to reach similar goals? And I especially, you know, think about that a lot with the onset of, you know, new construction and pending new construction and policy in the gateway to promote, you know, new construction, but we want to be mindful, you know, about what is being constructed and how it's going to impact the environment and all that. And so, I mean, how, how does that mechanism work for the go-around?
Sure, I can speak to that a bit. I'll start with providing some background on reach codes in this context. So the city has previously adopted a reach code with the last building code cycle, and what a reach code does is, there are effectively Title 24 energy standards that new development must meet, energy efficiency, so to speak, and a reach code sets the bar higher. It requires more stringent standards that result in greater energy efficiencies. The process for adopting reach codes is, they run with a building code cycle, so they're three-year terms. They must be determined to be cost-effective, and so the city's approach in the past is there's several vetted and approved, so to speak, cost-effectiveness studies that we know the California Energy Commission approves of. So the city has in the past used some of those boilerplate, I'll say, cost-effectiveness studies. So a reach code needs to be cost-effective, it runs with a three-year code cycle, the City of Arcata needs to adopt the reach code, the California Energy Commission needs to certify that reach code, and then it comes into effect. And I bring that process up because what we found in the last go-around with the reach codes was, the amount of time and effort it takes to get from inception to adoption of a reach code, running with the building code cycle, was very challenging and with limited staff resources. It really, to be frank, wasn't the best approach to take. And so that was actually why we had shifted to this all-electric ordinance, because that would remain in perpetuity until the municipal code was amended. So it's not to say that we couldn't look at reach codes, but the extra challenge is that we can't do the same thing with a reach code that we would have done with an all-electric ordinance. So in other words, we couldn't say, okay, we're going to ban natural gas by way of reach code, but not by ordinance, because we run into that same pitfall of the federal preemption. And so currently, we have a building code standards or energy efficiency code standards that are pretty progressive, I would say. And so if your current standards are here, and here is where all-electric would get you, that, that margin between not fully preempting and yet still being more aggressive with efficiency standards, I wouldn't recommend as currently the best use of resources. And so really, the discussion with the Energy Committee was to refocus on what types of programs and incentives can we look at for retrofitting existing, existing development, particularly because some of our, most of our housing stock is so aged and not, not energy efficient, particularly, you know, a lot of the houses that are built in the 50s, mine being one of them, so I can vouch for that, as well as incentivizing new development to head toward electrification. And when thinking about, okay, incentivizing new development, that's a very broad term, what types of new development are we likely seeing as being the greatest greenhouse gas emission generators, as well as potential savings, and what are we seeing happening the most of? So we're seeing a lot of multifamily housing going in, so that could be a good place to focus energy on incentivizing electrification of new construction of, for example, multifamily So I will, I'll pause there. I could, I could go on more about existing efforts and some of the recommendations, but I just wanted to speak more specifically to that question around grappling with, is the reach codes the best way in our current context? What other options if not?
Yeah, that was my question, was how can we incentivize it? So I'm curious to see, like, what our options are for that. Thank you. I love when Emily Benvey explains things.
Any other questions or comments, folks? Okay. No, we don't usually take public comment on staff reports. Okay, we have requests for a really quick two-minute bio break. I know we have not, oh, yeah, but, oh my God. Okay, go ahead, and then when, before we move to the next staff report and our staff reports, we'll take a quick break.
Sure, so I just wanted to expand a little bit before wrapping up this, the staff report on some of the city's current efforts that we are already doing, let's end it on a positive note, as well as some of the discussion that was specifically had around this item at the Energy Committee meeting that was about two and a half weeks ago, and kind of looking toward those, those next options within that context of, you know, incentivizing. So currently, the city has really focused on decarbonizing our city building facilities. Most recently, within the last couple of weeks, we worked with RCA on switching out water heaters to be heat pump water heaters. That included three facilities. We also are moving forward with our community center rooftop solar and LED retrofit loan through the California Energy Commission. We recently switched over our community center water heating to become an electric water heater. We're working with Swell Energy on battery backups at several city facilities. Some have been completed, some are still in process. And then certainly, we've been very engaged in the continuation of the climate action planning efforts, looking at environmental review, as well as potential future implementation and how that could look. So those are some of the things that the city is doing specific around building, buildings. We're also working toward mode shift, increasing our electric vehicle charging stations, electrifying our buses, our fleet as we're able to, so really also focusing on that transportation sector as well, given that that is another of the highest greenhouse gas emission generators. With the Energy Committee, we, we very much brainstormed, I'll use that term, of lots of options for potentially incentivizing both existing as well as new development. Some things could look at, you know, could there be an incentivized appliance burnout program? So when appliances burn out, incentivizing the replacement that they become electric. Could we work towards smart circuits? I'm just sharing some examples to help existing residences manage their loads and therefore be able to electrify more easily. There's the consideration of development credits, and that could be a timely consideration as the general plan efforts continue to move forward. So in other words, could multifamilies potentially get a density credit, for example, if they go all-electric versus mixed fuel? So those are some of the aspects that we had discussed at the committee level, and certainly, if, if the council's interested, we could do additional research to look at what are some of the most effective, implementable incentivization programs and projects, as well as looking at what other municipalities are doing, have done, and what are they doing in light of the recent Berkeley ruling, since several other municipalities in California have already enacted or were, working toward enacting electrification ordinances.
So just, I know I asked for the bio break, but just a really good, quick question. During the presentation from the Energy Committee, they talked about potential input or potential uses for the ARPA funds for the climate change allocations, and I went back and looked at that, and it was like, there's some grants or rebates through RCA. And so that's by jurisdiction, like, we take some money that we're allocating to Arcata? Or what is, I'm just trying to understand, like, is there a certain amount of money? Or is it just income? How does that get spent?
So RCA has a number of different rebate programs. They administer the programs. We do not as a city, and we do not have specific allocations. Energy Committee actually recently received a report on electric bike rebates and looking at restructuring that program and having some be income-eligible, you know, given different scenarios. Again, that wouldn't be Arcata-specific, it would be county-wide, but RCA does have those incentives, as well as, I don't know if they currently are offering the heat pump rebates, but I know that has happened in the past, and certainly what city staff could do is partner with and look toward working with RCA on different potential program options that we could support.
And I got to take advantage of one of those bike rebates, so I'm pretty excited.
I would also add that, you know, really, depending upon the council's direction, we've really allocated the, or prioritizing the ARPA allocation for climate change, really adaptation towards decarbonizing of the community center, but also there are some funds that could be, you know, flexible for augmenting existing incentive programs for, for fields of switching, you know, of working with regional partners like RCA. So we have, you know, there is a limited time period of spending those ARPA funds, but that's part of the conversation with the Energy Committee on where can we have the most impact on reducing emissions with current funding that we have and planning for the future.
And also, the city's working on their gas appliances, you want to say, whatever they might be, in looking at electrification of those. Oh, also, my belief is that you are also looking at when you can transfer from a certain kind of a piece of equipment that uses gas, you're changing over to electric. And that's a concern of different people in our community.
Yep, absolutely. We recently, our water heater at the community center burned out. That was a gas-powered water heater, so we made that switch to electric. So we're acting, you know, upon burnout, as well as opportunistically, our recent heat pump water heater project that we partnered with RCA on was an opportunity that arose, you know, prior to burnout. So we were both proactive and reactive.
And I'm thinking about the recreation, Parks Division. I'm thinking about things in the Parks Division that's changing. So thank you.
All right. Well, if that's it, I know a couple of us really need a quick restroom break, even though we're almost at the end here. So we'll take a really quick, less than five-minute break, and we'll be right back. All right, we are back. And our last item under Council and Staff Reports is going to be to receive a report from our city engineer on adding a new transit route to the city's transit system. So I know we're all excited to hear this update and look at where it's going. So thank you, Natra, take it away.
Good evening again. This is just a quick update, just wanted to keep you in the loop of what we are doing at our transit system. So in... Okay. So, as you know, we have transit system, and we are trying to improve all the time. So in last few weeks, or maybe last one month, we've been working with Cal Poly Humboldt and HTA to expand our route in the city limits. From a lot of discussions, what we came up with is an option. Right now, I'm going to show you here, it's, wow. Here it is. It's bigger is better. Bigger is better, anyway. So I'll just give you maybe overview of what we have currently. I will not zoom this smaller here, just so that you know what I'm talking about here. The red line is our red loud, red road we call the East and West Road, which covers the southern part of the city. And then we have a gold route, I would call it, it's north-south route, which covers from Samoa to all the way to the valley, east and valley west. And then we have a hybrid route, which is an orange route, which is a combination of red and gold. So those are our routes. For a long time, we've been running that, and we've been always talking about a new route adding. We call that a green route. But after talking to Cal Poly Humboldt and HTA, we came up with this new name because of Cal Poly Green and Gold. So that's the name of the route, and it will be similar to a gold route, but half of that. So now I'm going to expand this a little bit here, so you can see how that will look like. So here, as you can see, our gold route is here, goes this part, and then goes back again in the valley, east and west, through Western Road, Gintoli, Valley East, Valley West, James Road, comes back Spear, Alliance, Foster, to Cal Poly. So what would happen in the green route is it will be running every half an hour. Right now, all of our routes run every one hour. So now you have to wait for one hour at the bus stop. Now, only Library Circle and the transit are the place where you don't have to wait for one hour, because bus comes back to that place. But with this route, what would happen is this will be coming every half an hour and coming back to Library Circle. So what would happen is currently at Valley East and Valley West, we just go once every one hour, our transit system. There's a railway transit system that goes there every one hour also, which also comes back to Cal Poly Humboldt at the Library Circle. But what would happen with this one is now, within one hour, you will have four stops. There will be from green route, we'll have two within an hour, then we'll have our gold route, and then RTS. So in an hour, people who live in that area, students or any people who live in that area or in that neighborhood, they will be able to catch the bus and will be able to go to the downtown or the transit area, and they can connect to the Library Circle. So that is the proposed new route we are working with. I was hoping to have contracts signed before this meeting, but we sent the contract for signature. We haven't received the signed agreement yet, so I'm very hopeful, because we have received positive response from Cal Poly. They will be funding fully for this route. They will be paying for operation and maintenance for this route, at least for one year. Then we will see how that, how we do, and then based on that, we can make some changes if we desire.
Natra, is that just Monday through Saturday, or is there a Sunday bus?
All right, now, this is Monday to Friday only, and Monday to Fridays only for the peak hours. And when I say peak hours, it's only when we expect more students and people to use the bus system.
Good question, thank you. Unfortunately, yeah, not yet, but hopefully. I was talking to the RA Resident Advisor at Cal Poly Humboldt for the Comfort Inn, and that was the biggest challenge, is that the students were late for their first morning class, so this will rectify that situation, and they won't be late. So that's, I'm, I'm super excited.
Yeah, this is a very exciting time for the transit and for the bus users, and we've been talking about like a, having a route with a smaller frequency, and this is it, with a smaller frequency, and we'll see what kind of ridership we get. If we get a good ridership, we can maybe explore potential options in future, working with HTA to get some grants.
Okay, so the HT... My hand up, I want to be called on. So this morning at HTA meeting, we talked about that. And one of the biggest items that we have at HTA at the moment is drivers. And so this route will not happen unless they can find drivers to do it. So I'm just putting a plea out or a notice that we, HTA is hiring drivers, and that we definitely need more drivers in order to make things work. So for this route, they're saying, you know, they're putting, to make it work, they have their transit person who manages everybody, he's, he's on his, the janitor that cleans all the buses, he's going to be put on. Everyone they could put, you know, that has a license within the organization is going to be hopefully able to do this, but we really need drivers. We don't need to be actually using other people that have another job within the organization.
Alex, can I ask you a question? Are the lack of drivers one of the reasons that the buses don't run on the weekends?
Well, that's another whole thought process, but at this moment, you could say definitely. And this route that we're talking about right now may not occur unless they have enough drivers. So I just, you know, I'm just putting that out, because they, that was a big issue we have this morning. We talked about different things. We talked about, you know, personnel, et cetera, et cetera, trying to figure out what, what method we could actually use to encourage more people to drive. The other thing, become drivers, not to drive, well, to drive buses, I guess you could say that. Also, on our buses, we need to get a GPS system on them, and we also need to get a router for Wi-Fi, so that you always know where the bus is, so that you could have it on your phone, and you say, oh, it's so far away. Or if I'm in my room at the Comfort Inn, and the bus is moving around, I better get out there, or I will miss it. So that is part of what's going to be happening. I just want, you know, I mean, it's great, but if we don't have staff, it's going to be disappointing. So I just wanted to give you reality.
I'd love to learn to ride, drive a bus. Can I reach the pedals?
You need to go and get trained, get your license.
That is a great point, Alex, and you know, it's going to take a village to run this route, and we talked about this at our meeting with Cal Poly and our team. So definitely, as, at this point, or at least as of last week, HTA staff has promised to run at least half of the day portion, and we have our staff at our transit who are not supposed to be driving, but working in the office. He is stepping up, and he will be driving half of the early morning shift. So he'll be doing the morning shift, HT will be covering the half shift. So until we get driver position filled. So we will be working together to make this route happen, because we want to see the data, and we want this route to be successful, so we can, in future, show the data to other funding agencies and try to keep this route in place.
Does HTA pay for training?
I'm sorry?
Does HTA, will they pay for an interesting person to train? Or is that like an...
Yes, yes. They have, they have a great training program.
Are there benefits?
I just, you know, that's a reality.
Benefits too.
Everything is, you know, we, we wish for the world. We wish that we had this, we wish that we had that, you know, we hear this, people talk to us about it, and, you know, I think about it, and I wish we had other things. We just don't have the staff and the money, and we need the money in order to have the staff, to be able to do many things we want. But on another, so that's on that issue. I don't have anything else to say on that issue, but talk to your friends about people becoming bus drivers. It can be a good business.
Yeah, definitely. So since I'm here, I'll just give you maybe one more stat that you might be interested in, and I have in front of me here, is in the fiscal year 2021, our ridership was very low because of COVID. We had only 30,000 people using our transit system. In 2122, it increased to 40,000 plus. And as of June of 2023, we have again increased to 63,000. So it is definitely up, people are using it, so it's good. And we had our free bus ride program we have been doing for the last three years. It's also increasing. People are knowing more about it, and they're using it more. So it's increasing also significantly.
So thank you. So there, there are going to be other experiments that HT is trying to do, will be trying to do, they'll be putting those in the, and they're just beginning to lay those out, and as they happen, they'll be mainly starting in Eureka and McKinleyville, and I will bring those forward when it, and it happens.
Well, since I'm here, I'll give you one more update. We are on transit. So we are working on our transit development plan. We have to do it every five years, so we had two drafts received. I believe this final draft is going to the HCOG board on August 17th, I believe. So once it's finalized, then we'll be using that as for next five years. And that document has the new suggested route for the city, and the cost, and how we can implement it. Thank you.
Transit. All right, well, that's going to then take us to our, are there any other staff updates? Okay, thank you, City Manager. Well, then that'll take us to our council member updates, which we can start with Alex, and if you have anything else about transit to add, I know you have your HTA notes right there.
I know.
Stacy started last time. Yes, she did.
We did. It's their turn.
Today at HTA, the Mayor, Ria Dale, was there, and she said they're still working really hard in rebuilding their town, and it's Wildwood Days that are coming up this weekend, and they encourage everyone to consider coming down to support Ria Dale. So I wanted to point that out and bring that up as something. And we will have on Sunday, again, we will have music, and we will have the art on the plaza, and every day, every Sunday, it picks up, it gets better and better, which is quite exciting to think about that, and just to see how, and of course, our weather has been good, so that helps a lot. I don't really have anything else.
So I got to attend another Redwood Region Economic Development Commission, and I have to say, I'm really liking it. So yeah, I'm excited, I'm learning a lot. Greg Foster just brings so much to the table, I'm, yeah, I'm learning. I also attended a Arcata House Partnership Quarterly Board, and we got a lot of updates, again, on safe parking, various grants that are in progress. I got to do, and I forgot to mention or invite y'all last time, so it's over, but I did an Ollie Brown Bagged Lunch presentation called Transforming a Community, Valley West. So if you didn't get to attend, there will be, it will be uploaded on their website and also their YouTube channel. I attended the Humboldt Pet Supply Monthly Marsh Cleanup. It was a great success. I'd love to give a shout out, because they do this every month, and free donuts, free kinetic coffee, every participant gets a goodie bag, and it's not too shabby. If you have a pet, it's worth it. And of course, you're doing a community service. And then they also have a special prize for the most litter cleaned up or collected, and the next marsh cleanup, it's on G Street, is Saturday, August 26. And speaking of cleanups, I'd like to invite everyone to the Valley West Community Clean the Sidewalk event. That's this Sunday from nine to 11, and we too give out prizes for the most litter and also the best before and after pitcher. And yeah, there's several things happening before our next city council meeting, so I just want to remind you that there's a coastal cleanup event by Trinidad's Coastal Land Trust, and that will be, it's typically on the second Sunday, but this time it's going to be on Saturday, August 12, and it'll be at Hoodoo Point. And I think that's all I have.
I'll add, I did one of the Coastal Land Trust cleanups, and they don't get a lot of people coming out. My friend's one of their board members, so they're trying to get more people to come out. And it's, it's a fun one, because actually, there's not a lot of trash, but the trash that you do find is very interesting. It's a lot of like, you know, beach trash that's washed up. So we had a lot of fun, and hopefully did not get tetanus, carrying some really crazy crab pots up those stairs at Hoodoo Point. So they're, they're looking for more volunteers, so it's a fun one to do. They have a good crew. All right, my reports, again, yeah, there's a lot of upcoming events. Tomorrow, there's going to be a chamber mixer. It's at Ridgefield Events, which is up Fickle Hill about two point, oh, I'm on Fickle Hill again, it's 2.4 miles up Fickle Hill. But you could look it up on the, the Chamber has, has posted about it and has the official address on there. But beautiful wedding events venue, and there is going to be music by Young and Lovely Jazz, there's going to be food, it's a great networking opportunity, and just a beautiful space, so I recommend people go to that tomorrow. It's from 5:30 to 7:00. Also, this weekend, at the marsh, starting at 7:30, is the lantern floating ceremony, which I will be giving the little opening message of and helping emcee. And also, I believe they'll be doing the, you can create the lanterns at the farmer's market in the morning before, they'll have a station for that. And so music and folks will start gathering around 7, 7:30, and then by 7:45, the ceremony will begin. There's supposed to be hula dancers, McKinleyville Choir, the raging grannies, is that what it's called? Yes, the raging grannies, the Humboldt Taiko drummers, so it's always a beautiful event, and, you know, guaranteed to be great. So come out to that and make sure to walk or bike if you're, if you're coming too, because you kind of have to right now with the way it's, things are down there. The Eye Block Party is going to be taking place, per usual, on Labor Day, which is Monday, September 4th, for the Nicaragua-Kanwapa Sister City Project. It's a great fundraiser. Every year, there's going to be music all day, and myself and the Vice Mayor are going to be emceeing it, so you know it's going to be a good time when you give us a microphone. And then last thing, I'll just report from my RCA board meeting. We had a really good final presentation and a wrap-up of a project that they've been doing called Humboldt's Electric Future Report. And so it's really been a series of workshops put on by RCA staff about how RCA should prioritize spending towards different strategic goals, and how to procure energy from local sources, and things that we've been talking about all night, like electrification and energy resilience and battery storage and all that stuff. And so it was really about getting the public involved in that budget kind of, or well, priority process, and then also just kind of educated on the energy issues facing Humboldt. And so the report, I think it should already be, after we put our stamp of approval on it at the board meeting, should be going up onto RCA's website. And if you are interested in energy issues locally, it's a really, it's a good read, there's a lot of great graphics, and just about what that public process was like, and a lot of the workshops, there was, you know, a good turnout, both in-person and virtually that they had, and so RCA was pretty excited about that process. So good work by RCA staff, and if you're interested in reading it, it should be up on the website soon. So again, that's called Humboldt's Electric Future.
That's it for me. Yeah, it's been a little while since I've reported out on HWMA, because it's been a while since there'd been a meeting, but I promise that I will have some things scintillating, I'm sure to report at the next meeting. Just again, to echo what my fellow council members said, there are a lot of wonderful things happening for the rest of the summer, so get out. There's also the Oban Festival, that's Sunday, the 13th, which will be before our next meeting. It's the last week of the crabs, so if you haven't been to a crabs game yet, please take advantage of it and go. I got to go to a Cal Poly housing mixer yesterday, which was really interesting, and talked to a lot of the folks that... to a lot of the folks that work for the university, and are very involved with helping our students find housing, so that was great. And once again, I want to thank HCOG for having Dan Burden come out, because I thought that was a really, really wonderful thing, so thank you again. That's all I have.
Don't forget, we have Arcata, Arts Arcata, not this Friday, but next Friday, and that's from 4 to 8. And as Alex mentioned, go check out the Sunday Arts Free Music Market on the plaza on Sunday.
Oh, well, with that, I think our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.